Good evening. Welcome to the Town and Quarter Madera Planning Commission for Tuesday, October 28th. I'm Peter Chase and I am remote tonight. Presumably all can hear me. I can hear myself talking. So beyond that, I am remote because of medical circumstances that advised against going anywhere in a vehicle, et cetera. But my brain is still here and functioning. So I'm going to start the meeting and please take a roll call.
Commissioner Bendel?
Here.
Commissioner Besheuer?
Yeah.
Commissioner Rogers?
Here.
Vice Chair Kenny?
Here.
And Chair Chase?
Here. Thank you. Please join me in a salute to the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. So at every meeting, we open the meeting to a section for public comment for anything that is not on tonight's agenda. So if there's anybody that wants to make a comment, you would have three minutes to do so from the podium or via Zoom. So is there anybody in the room that would like to take this opportunity to comment on something that we're not going to talk about later? No takers? All right. Anybody on with a raised hand, Claire?
No hands raised online.
Okay. So we can sufficiently say that we've given the opportunity for that public comment and move on, close that section, and move on to our hearing for tonight. This is a study session and it's not a hearing with a decision to be made. This is a study session. Staff will jump into that aspect of it. This is a preliminary review of an SB 330 application for an assisted living and memory care facility with 150 units, including 118 assisted living units and 32 memory care units at 58 Tamal Vista, 56 Tamal Vista, 56 Madera Boulevard. So rather than having me mispronounce things, let's go right to Martha and have her inform us.
Good evening, Chair Chase and members of the commission. This evening, you will be discussing a proposed assisted living and memory care facility at 56 Madera Boulevard. As Chair Chase said, this is a study session item and no action will be taken. The commission will be providing the applicant with feedback on issues such as planning and design prior to the submission of a formal application and prior to any formal hearings. A proposed project has been submitted to the town pursuant to Senate Bill 330's preliminary application process. A preliminary application was submitted on August 11th, and the applicant has 180 days from that date to submit a formal application. The staff report includes a thorough discussion of various state laws that apply to this project, including SB 330 and state density bonus law. The staff presentation does not include an overview of these bills, but I'm happy to answer any questions that the commission may have. And the proposed project includes 150 units, which consists of 118 assisted living units and 32 memory care units. The facility would be operated by Oakmont Management Group, which manages over 100 senior communities in California, Nevada, and Hawaii. The facility would offer a comprehensive range of services, and the applicant is in attendance tonight and will be providing an overview of the company. The proposed development at 56 Madera Boulevard includes 150 units, which again consists of 118 assisted living units and 32 memory care units. The preliminary application that was submitted on August 11th was for a total of 165 units, which included 125 assisted living units and 40 memory care units. The original application also proposed to set aside 15% of the units as affordable to very low income households. That would have qualified the application for a 50% density bonus, and since that time, the application has been revised to 150 units, and the applicant is not proposing any affordable units. The 118 assisted living units qualify as senior housing development within the meaning of state density bonus law. And these units will qualify towards the town's regional housing needs allocation. The 32 memory care units do not include cooking facilities, and these units are considered a commercial use per the town zoning ordinance, and as such, they will not count towards arena. This rendering on the slide is the view from Madera Boulevard. The front facade is oriented towards the street, and the front elevation features the main entry, which is highlighted by a portico chair. This will create a sense of arrival and also provide shelter from the elements for residents and visitors. The three-story building is approximately 171,000 square feet. It has a maximum height of 43 feet 4 inches and provides 96 parking spaces. And the design features a modern European architectural style that incorporates natural materials and articulated massing. The project site is located at 56 Madera Boulevard. The site is outlined in white dash marks on this slide. The property has frontage along Madera Boulevard to the south, Highway 101 to the east, and Tamal Vista Boulevard to the west. The project site is adjacent to several commercial uses, which include a vacant office building at 50 Madera Boulevard, which is on the corner of Madera and Tamal Vista. To the south across Madera Boulevard is the town center, and to the north is a two-story office building. And located to the west across Tamal Vista Boulevard is single-family residences. Now, the site is approximately 5.5 acres. It is currently developed with a two-story, 110 Best Western Hotel, a standalone building that was formerly used as a restaurant, and several smaller accessory structures. The grounds are landscaped, and there is a swimming pool in the approximate center of the site. There is also a .81 acre pond and surface parking for 188 vehicles. Access to the site is currently provided from two driveways off of Madera Boulevard. The project site has a general plan land use designation of mixed-use commercial, and the purpose of this designation is intended to support infill activities and site and building redevelopment of existing neighborhoods and commercial centers. allowable uses include office, light industrial, commercial services, and new housing developments. And the allowable FAR is .34 for commercial projects, which can be increased to .40 for a mixed-use development with housing. The zoning for the site is MX-1 Tamal Vista Mixed Use Corridor, and the purpose of this zoning district is to create a mixed-use residential and non-residential district and to also facilitate improvement of the eastern Tamal Vista streetscape. The zoning district includes requirements for increased sidewalks and also for improved bicycle infrastructure along Tamal Vista. The allowable density is 15.1 dwelling units an acre, which may be increased to 20 dwelling units an acre for senior housing development, for which this project qualifies. The allowable FAR is .34 for commercial, which can be increased to .4 for a mixed-use project with residential. The zoning district identifies residential care facilities as a conditional use within the zoning district, and the town cannot apply the CUP requirements to the residential units because the standards are subjective and the town is limited to only evaluating the housing component using objective standards. The site is also within the Baylands Risk Zone and Natural Habitat overlay, and this overlay is applied to sites that have the potential for substantial development, have a slope less than 10%, and are underlaying with bay mud. And sites within this overlay require approval of a preliminary and precise plan, and these plans are required to be approved by the town council. So as such, the Planning Commission will be making a recommendation to the council on all aspects of this project. Now, this slide shows the development standards for this property. The density again is 15.1 units an acre, which can be increased to 20 units an acre for senior housing. So the base density for this project is 110 units. The assisted living component of the project qualifies for a 20% density bonus, and this is because it's classified as a senior citizen housing development. And the density bonus is not tied to affordability requirements. The applicant is proposing a total of 118 units, and again, this is just the assisted living units within the facility. The allowable FAR for a mixed-use project is .4, and the applicant's proposal is .83. And this is based on the net area of land of the site, which excludes the square footage of the pond. And the applicant has requested a waiver from the FAR standard. The maximum height allowed in the MX district is 35 feet, and the proposed building at its tallest point is 43 feet 4 inches, and the applicant has also requested a waiver from this development standard. And as part of the formal application process, the applicant will be required to provide additional information on the requested waivers to demonstrate that the project could not be built without granting of those waivers. The project would comply with the various setback requirements. It also complies with the streetscape improvement area along Tamal Vista, which is a minimum 20 foot, and it proposes a minor encroachment into the rear yard landscape, which has requirement of 10 feet, and the applicant's proposal is 8 feet 6 inches. The project is consistent with the landscape buffers on all other sides of the site. The proposed facility includes three floors. The memory care and the associated amenities of the memory care are all on the first floor, and they're shown on this slide in a red box. The ground floor includes 32 memory care units, 28 assisted living units, multiple lobbies, a kitchen, staff offices, a dining room for both memory care residents and the assisted living residents, a bar and lounge, a reading room, a sitting room, a music room, and laundry facilities. The second floor includes 62 assisted living units and a few residential amenities, including an art studio and a salon. And the third floor includes 28 assisted living units with a variety of amenity space for the residents, which include a media room, activity room, tech room, fitness center, a card room, a physical therapy space, and an outdoor terrace. Vehicle or access to the site is, would be provided from Madera Boulevard. There is one proposed driveway on Madera Boulevard. The existing driveway closer to the 101 off-ramp would be removed as part of this project. A secondary access point is proposed along the northern property boundary adjacent to 21 Tamal Vista Boulevard. Surface parking areas would be provided onsite adjacent to Madera Boulevard and Tamal Vista Boulevard. And a trash enclosure is proposed in the southwestern portion of the site. The existing pond located in the northeastern portion of the site would be retained and preserved. Quarter Madera Municipal Code includes parking standards for a variety of use types. Chapter 1820 does not include a parking standard that fits perfectly for this use, this type of use. And when a use is not specified in the parking chapter, the use that is most similar is used to evaluate required parking. In this case, there are two uses that are close, close to the proposed use, which includes a convalescent hospital, which has a parking requirement of one space for three beds, resulting in a required parking of 57 spaces, and a nursing home, which has a parking requirement of one space for two beds, resulting in a requirement of 85 spaces. The applicant proposes 96 parking spaces, which includes four EV spaces and four accessible stalls. In addition, the facility would operate a shuttle for its residents to use. The Arbor Group conducted a site assessment on June 30th, 2025, to inventory the existing trees on the project site. This was included as Attachment 6 to the report. The assessment identified the species of trees, identified each tree with a numerical GPS number, measured the trunk diameter, the trunk diameter at four and a half feet above grade, and also evaluated the health of the tree. There are 218 trees on the project site, half of which are California privates, which is an invasive species. Most of the trees are in sight, on the site are in poor or critical condition, and the trees in the parking lot have not been irrigated, which has resulted in declining health of many of the trees. There are 16 species of trees on the site. Only one of these species, the coastal redwood, is a native species. The arborists did not tag the California privates located adjacent to the pond. These trees are small, densely clustered and in poor condition, and were not easily accessible, which prevented them from being tagged. So the privates in the vicinity of the pond are not included on this slide, which shows the number of trees to be removed, which was part of the tree disposition survey within the landscape plan. All of the privates proposed for, the privates are proposed for removal due to their invasive, due to them being invasive and their tendency to spread. The planning staff has had preliminary discussions with the applicant about potentially phasing or staggering the removal of some of the trees as they do provide a bird habitat, and this approach will be evaluated as part of the formal application. This slide is showing the proposed trees for removal, and again, this does not include the privates near the pond, and showing whether the tree is a permit-sized tree, which permit-sized trees have a circumference of 50 inches or more at breast height. A total of 22 permit-sized trees are proposed to be removed, and 91 non-permit-sized trees are proposed to be removed. The proposed landscape plan includes the planting of 171 trees, of which 68 trees would be located in the parking lot. Most of the proposed trees, 107, would have a size of 24-inch box or larger. The landscape also features a variety of shrubs, which are mostly five-gallon in size. And the landscape plan incorporates a variety of areas for the residents as well, which includes shaded outdoor seating, landscape courtyards with gardens, and active and passive recreational spaces, including a residential pool. And there are also walking trails connecting the site, including a sensory garden designed for the memory care residents. On June 30th, 2025, Governor Newsom signed two budget trailer bills, which included Assembly Bill 130 and Senate Bill 131. These took effect immediately on July 1st, and the bills enacted significant reform to the California Environmental Quality Act. These exemptions only apply to a housing development project, which includes residential units, or in a mixed-use project where two-thirds of the square footage is residential. The applicant's land use attorney provided justification to the town as to why this new SEQA exemption would apply to the project. And there are a variety of qualifying provisions in order to use this exemption, and if a project complies with all the criteria except for one, then just that one criteria is what would be analyzed in the environmental document. And at this time, the only criteria that staff is aware of that could preclude the use of this infill exemption is the onsite pond. So this is something that will continue to be evaluated by staff. And the eventual SEQA determination would be presented to the Planning Commission, and it would be part of a recommendation to the council. So following the study session, the applicant will further refine the project plans and will submit a formal application to the town. And a public hearing would be scheduled before the Planning Commission once the application is complete and the SEQA review is also complete. And in this case, since the preliminary and precise plans required for the project, the council would be the decision-maker on all aspects of the project, which would include a use permit, a design review, preliminary and precise plans, and environmental review. So the commission would be making a formal recommendation to the council on the project. So that concludes the staff presentation. I'm available for questions. And Carissa Savant and Colin Bagwell of O&amp;I Development are in the audience, along with members of their project team, and they will be providing a presentation as well and available for questions, too.
Thank you, Martha. So we'll start by seeing if the commissioners have any questions for you, and in this case, we'll start with Andrew, see if he's got anything that he would like to get from you.
Peter?
Yes.
I'm curious as to why is the memory care units are considered commercial? Just curious about how it has that designation.
The Department of Housing Community Development has not rendered an opinion on this. However, when we look at those units, it's less for living than it is to receive services. As Martha mentioned a moment ago, they don't have individual or shared kitchens. They are there primarily because they require a high level of service. It's a type of use that often requires a different kind of license than an assisted living facility or a normal residential care facility. And as far as we understand, most jurisdictions treat them as commercial.
Got it. So that allows them to not be counted as part of the FAR?
Well, it's still counted as part of the FAR, but they're not counted as units. So when we're looking at what the density is for the site, the dwelling units an acre, we're just looking at the assisted living component and not the memory care.
Got it. Thank you.
Okay. Is that all you have right now, Andrew?
Yes.
Okay. So then we can go over to Valerie, who's sitting next to you. Go ahead, Valerie.
All right. Yes, I have a couple. So out of, so it's only 118 units that would be counting towards our HNA, correct? How would that position us into meeting the obligations in terms of the, for the state in terms of the density? When, when those 118 will be built out, since they do not have any affordable component into them, how would, how would we meet as Quarter Madera our obligations in front of the state?
So the arena is 725 units, and those are broken down into different levels of affordability, and it also includes market rate housing. So we're required for this, this current cycle to provide 281 above moderate income units, so they would count towards that.
All right. So 118 would count towards those 201 units, right? And are there any policy implications, considering that for the elderly community, we are not providing any affordable housing?
And this is something we are still analyzing. If our, the town has an inclusionary ordinance, which applies to residential development projects, and the town is evaluating if those requirements apply to this project. So we, at this point, have not made a final determination, so it's.
And I believe the original application has been including the 15% of the affordable units, but it has been removed by the applicant, correct?
Correct. And I'm sure they can provide additional context on, on that piece.
Okay. And then for, and forgive me if I misunderstood that component, but it sounds from 118 that they also will not have their own kitchens, right? Like it says somewhere that they, they will have a chef provided meals.
So they, the, the assisted living units do have their own kitchen, so they have the ability to cook, or they also have the option for, for, to eat within the dining room with other residents, and there are meals that are prepared by the, the kitchen.
So even the ones, so each, every single, out of 118, every single unit will have a kitchen, or they will have a shared space with the kitchen?
They have, they have kitchens. And the, the assisted living units, some of them, you know, they're studios, one bedrooms and two bedrooms, and some of them are as large as, I think the largest ones are about 1,400 square feet, so some of these are, you know, quite large, and they do have the ability to, to cook within their units.
And my other question is probably a little bit more generic, but in terms of, this is a study, but the plan's been pretty developed for the study, which is not typical. So for me, what's interesting is, I mean, the SEQA obviously hasn't been done, like doing any like traffic studies or any other studies, right? At this point, but the plans have been already developed and, but all of the extra studies have not been done yet. Am I understanding that correctly?
Yeah, at this point, the SEQA determination has not been determined. It's likely a traffic study would not be required for this project. These type of uses have, tend to have very low traffic counts because of the, that kind of the nature of the use. And that, you know, at this point, the applicant has submitted a preliminary application through SB 330, and they have not yet submitted their formal application, so there is still some opportunities for modifications to be made.
I see. And then one of my last questions to you guys, if there is a consideration by the town to work with Marin County to add a bus stop next to the facility so that the workers could travel and commute?
Yeah, that's definitely something we can discuss with Marin Transit. Amy and I actually have a meeting with some of the transit providers scheduled, so that's something we can talk to about how we notify them most effectively about future housing projects and the best way to influence changes to routes based on our development.
Thank you. I have no more questions for staff.
Okay. Thank you. Margaret, it's your turn.
Just, again, some clarification. What exactly does the Planning Commission and then the town council have the power to decide?
Well, tonight, this is a really preliminary opportunity for you all to review and provide comments, but because of the nature of the application, it does go to the council, so you would be making recommendations to the council.
Correct.
Does that help?
No. What, what exactly?
Do you mean your purview?
If we have no, if we, if the town council has no input, say, because of the different regulations that this is coming in under, what, what are, what is, what can we recommend and not recommend?
I see. So this is similar to the last housing project where you, you do have limited discretion.
Right.
And there, and this is talked about on the staff report, it's a little bit nuanced because there's still a use permit required, but it's part of the overall project. It's nested within the project. So, so really, your, your purview is very similar to the last project, where you don't have a lot of discretion when it comes to design or unit count or things of that sort. But we do provide the opportunity to provide input. The applicant team is here tonight, and you'll hear from them on, on just their presentation, and they want to hear your input as well in the communities. So it's, there's still a role for you all, if that's your concern, but again, this is another situation where state law has really taken some of your discretion or most of your discretion away.
And one of my concerns for the town has always been the on-off ramp of 101 there because the cars come off of 101. They don't see what's there. They immediately have to make a decision what lane to be in. And it seems, it's always seems dangerous to me there because there's no advance warning because of buildings along the way of what you're going to face as you come off, and they come off fast. And, and so my concern continues to be, even if elderly people are, are facing that issue, has the town done any study or is there going to be any kind of, I don't know, traffic safety study there? I don't know, traffic safety study there?
We have not fully analyzed it yet. Our Public Works Department does review all development applications. And as part of their review, they are looking at line of sight issues. This project does propose to eliminate one of the driveways on Madeira Boulevard. So the driveway closer to the 101 off ramp would be removed and there would just be one driveway kind of further on the site. So that would improve existing conditions in that you're pulling the cars further away from that, that off ramp. But we hear your comment and we'll be sure to, to evaluate it.
I don't have any other questions for the department.
Okay, thank you. Daniel?
Yeah, thank you. I guess what I'm trying to understand, the the SB 330 part of the project, the independent assisted living is, has some limitations in review. But the conditional use permit is much more latitude for us to provide review. Yet the buildings are detached. There's no separate designation of what parking goes with which building. They're sharing a driveway entrance. So to what extent does the conditional use permit, since these are all intertwined physically, not somehow also apply to SB 330?
To be honest, Commissioner, this, that concept is still a work in progress. We are working on that issue. We have discussed it already at length. And all we can tell you right now is that when it, when we come forward with a recommendation on this project, we will do our best to segregate those two uses and we will err on the side of not applying objective standards if they would impact the, the property that does constitute a housing project. Affordable units, that is.
So so in terms of planning commission input, I'm just thinking ahead here. We theoretically have quite a bit more latitude on the memory care facility design.
Yes, except they are all housed in the same building. So to the extent that you make, impose conditions that would restrict the housing units, that would be problematic.
And have we ever had this situation before?
Not to my knowledge.
This situation isn't uncommon, but there's really not a lot of guidance on how to separate two things when you have a housing development that's intermingled with a commercial use or something else that allows for discretion. So this is just another area of state law that is a little murky.
Okay, I didn't see any record of the applicant's outreach to neighbors. Is there any documentation of that?
Not yet, but they are very eager to do outreach to the surrounding.
They haven't done it yet.
This was the first step was the, the study, study session tonight. And as part of that, we did do a notice to 500 feet and then also did outreach to everyone on the interested parties list for the residents in project, which has quite a few people. So this is the, the first step in the, the outreach and the applicant will be doing some additional outreach. And that's, they can speak to it more, but it's something they do with all of their projects.
I think I read that it's a requirement there'd be a notice onsite about these hearings. I didn't see it when I went to the site.
So the town is working on the onsite noticing that hasn't been formally adopted, but they will be installing projects signs onsite.
Wouldn't that have normally done before this hearing? So people would be able to see that and come?
Well, the, at this point, it's just draft, it's a draft document. It hasn't been normally adopted.
Draft document, that's about 22 pages.
The, the requirement to do onsite, onsite signage.
That's a draft?
It, it has not been, we were going to take it back to the commission for further feedback, so we plan to do that very soon.
I did read it, that it's a requirement.
Well, I will say that we are meeting all state requirements as far as notification. But as you know, we are forming our own local, local guidelines on when to provide onsite signage in the large format. We brought that to your commission a few months back. So that's what Martha's referring to. So we have exceeded the state requirements for notification for this particular hearing. And again, this is preliminary. So the formal hearing process will be when we have a formal application submitted and a recommendation before you. And so by that point in time, we should have more guidance formed on, on the onsite signage. But again, even the onsite signage of the large format sign is above and beyond what state law requires. So it's in addition to.
Is there a reason this site was not included in the most recent housing element?
Yes, it had been entitled to be a hotel. So in 2022, the town council approved an application for a 149 unit hotel at this site. And so because of that, it was not included in the housing element. In order to include sites in housing elements, you had to provide evidence that there was a strong likelihood that housing would be developed within the eight year period. And so we just couldn't meet that requirement with an entitled project on that site.
Well, thank you. The, the Baylands Risk Zone and Natural Habitat overlay district seems to have its own formula for housing density. Have you studied that?
Not closely, but the, the state density bonus law kind of supersedes any requirements we have that are inconsistent. But that is.
Does it supersede the Baylands Risk Zone and Habitat ordinance?
Yes, but we'd give you more detail on that, but it is our, it's our understanding that it is superseded. So in any area where a local jurisdiction has a limitation on housing units, the, the state generally overrides those. But we can provide more detail with the formal application.
What about the other criteria in Baylands Risk Zone? Besides density?
So the applicant may be able to speak to that more, but they will be meeting all the requirements related to floodplain and bay mud and all, all of the actual structural requirements.
Because I think that has to go to council also. Is that correct?
Yes.
Does the general plan discuss the pond in Riparian area as a unique marshland habitat?
I don't believe it does. I think the identification of it being as a wetland was, that occurred as part of the entitlement of the hotel on the site. And it was not identified in the, the general plan, but I can look that up while we're speaking.
I guess the question would be, does it qualify under unique marshland habitat under the general plan? Would be my question.
Yeah, we can look that up while we're
Do we have any noise standards for housing adjacent to 101? Like, like for triple glazing?
Last part again?
Do we have any noise standards for housing that's adjacent to 101, such as triple glazing requirement?
Triple glazing. So we do have a noise ordinance in place and there are thresholds. And so as, as part of an environmental review, those would be a, something that is reviewed. And so we can probably look back in the hotel entitlement to see what, what happened with that noise threshold and what was required for the hotel. But for housing, that would be a very similar requirement. But it's, it's something that we can review is when they actually submit their formal application.
Would we request that they do noise studies at the point where the location where the building starts on the east side?
We're undetermined at this time. So a lot of the environmental review components are pending. So this is a very preliminary look at the project and we have a new state law to grapple with as well. So once we receive the formal application, then we'll have a better understanding of what environmental review process we will undertake and then what special studies would be required, if any.
The parking analysis that was done. I, I wondered if, and I know we may not have control over how many parking spaces they provide based on SB 330. However, the two categories that staff looked at, one was convalescent living, the other was convalescent independent living. No, wait a minute. One was convalescent hospital and the other is a nursing home. But it seems to me the nursing home might apply to the memory living units. But it seems to me the housing, which has kitchens, is basically housing units ought to be looked at as a housing standard for one and two bedroom units. Why didn't, why didn't we look at it that way?
I will add that as part of the housing element rezoning that was done, the town developed a specific standard for this very use type, which was one parking space per three beds and then one space for, based on the number of employees. And that standard doesn't apply to this site since it wasn't rezoned as part of our housing element. But we also looked at what the required parking would be if we were using that new parking requirement and they, the project as proposed still met that parking standard. I think the applicant can also speak better to the number of residents that typically have cars that live at these facilities. Because they obviously operate many facilities and kind of know what's, what's typical. This is different, you know, different kind of residence than, you know, family residential. So their kind of car needs do vary.
So is it possible in the future to provide the commission with what that parking requirement would be for the assisted living units, which are basically housing units rather than hospital or nursing home?
The parking standard that was adopted with the housing element, is that what you're referencing or?
What Martha's trying to say is we didn't have one in this zoning district for assisted living. So there's, she basically reviewed what was closest and really tried to make a fit for what the use was. But our, our code is somewhat old and not always, we, we don't always find the exact thing that we need. So it's really just a matter of analysis of what do we have that's very similar? And then how do we understand what parking requirements are required based on the similar uses that we actually have listed in the code?
Okay, but I'm just trying to get clear. These are housing units, right? Studio, one bedroom, two bedroom. They're not a nursing home. They're not rehabilitation care. They're housing units. So I'm still not understand why don't we apply what our code is for multifamily housing? Just, just to look at it, whether we actually, they can provide that many spaces, or at least we know what a reasonable standard might be.
We could certainly provide that with the next iteration of the project. But I will say, most jurisdictions do break out senior housing or assisted living from multifamily because senior housing and assisted living have drastically lower parking requirements and traffic counts. So, but for analysis sake, we can certainly say, well, what is the multifamily parking requirement? And then what are similar uses to this? And then what is the project providing? Is that what you're looking for?
Yeah, and I think, like you said, the applicant might be able to provide some information about their experience with parking in other locations. That's my last question, Peter.
Okay. Great. So I just have a couple of questions for staff. And this is a preliminary application. Has FIRE taken a look at this project?
Yes, FIRE did take a look at the, the plan submitted with the preliminary application. They had one comment related to the secondary access on, onto Tamil, on 21 Tamil Vista and requested information from the applicant to demonstrate that their, this access onto this property is allowed and that there's a deed restriction in place. So that was a comment that has been provided to the applicant. And if for some reason they cannot provide that secondary access onto 21 Tamil Vista, they would need to provide it elsewhere.
So at the rear of the property, the northeast corner, it looks like they're utilizing somewhat of the old exit out of the parking lot onto the neighboring property. Is that?
Correct. And the, the residents in project approved several years ago, their secondary access was also on to 21 Tamil Vista.
Okay. One of the concerns in the previous structure was the FIRE access to the building as a whole. And that was part of the access in from the west previously. Has FIRE brought any of that up that their ladder, their big ladder vehicles will get in and be able to sufficiently cover this large structure?
Yeah, they have not provided any concerns related to access to the building. It was just a comment about this secondary.
All right. And they reviewed the landscape plan as well, I trust, at this point?
They have actually not reviewed the landscape plan because it was not included in that preliminary application. So they will review the formal application. This site is not in the, the WUI, so a lot of those new zone zero requirements will not apply to it.
Yeah, okay. And you mentioned that the applicant is aware of the Tamil Vista sidewalk plan to underground utilities along that corridor. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay. There was a previous study for the Madeira traffic plan there. Has any of that been brought in to be looked at by you or the applicant to address highway exiting traffic and or pedestrian crossing at all?
Not at this time.
Okay, all right. So what threshold, I wrote this down and now I can't remember exactly why, what threshold will require a traffic study? So what is it that triggers the traffic study necessity for this project?
So in general, the trigger is vehicle miles traveled, so VMT, and there's thresholds set by the state. So it is our guess that this would screen out to where there would be no traffic study required. But again, we're at a preliminary stage and so we'll be reviewing that. But we also have obviously the previous review and, and traffic studies that have been provided as part of the hotel as well.
Yeah, that would be a higher threshold. Okay. So I'm just going to say, commissioners, tonight, we're going to let the applicant make their presentation here. And I'd like you to think about these design questions. Daniel had some pointed questions about permitting and so forth. But we're here to provide feedback and some direction to these applicants. So we'll listen to their application and then we'll come together to talk about what we hear, what we think. We'll also have public comment on this project at this time, but we're not under the formal structure of a hearing. But I just want to say then that we'll listen to the applicant's proposal. We'll ask the applicant questions for a period of time. Then I think we'll go into public comment. At that point, we might take a break before public comment. And we'll get through that if we don't have too many people in the room to make public comment. And then come together after that to make a statement to the applicant about our asks and conclusions and recommendations. So with that said, who's going to start the applicant presentation tonight? No microphone.
We're just pulling up the presentation right now.
Okay, all right. Great.
Okay, good evening. Good evening, Chair and Commissioners, and thank you, Martha and staff. My name's Carissa Savant. I'm the Vice President of O and I Development. I did bring quite the design team with me tonight too, to go through any technical questions and things that we might be able to answer for you. I have my partner, Vice President of Acquisitions, Colin Bagwell, here. I have our civil engineer. I have our civil engineer, Wayne Leach, here as well. Our biologist, Monken Associates, and our landscape architect too. And also along here is the owners of the property and the developers of the previous entitled hotel. So hoping we can answer any questions you guys may have. So I just wanted to share a little bit about O and I. I'll keep this pretty short. I understand the cadence of this study session. But I also want to just talk a little bit how we approached this project as well and the history there. So O and I Development is an affiliated entity and we're the development arm of Oakmont Management Group that Martha touched on earlier. We are one of the most respected operators in the senior living industry. For over two decades, we have set the high standard for high quality senior housing throughout two of our brands. We have Oakmont Senior Living Communities as well as Ivy Living. And currently, our management company overrates, operates over 100 communities throughout California, Nevada, and Hawaii. So Oakmont and O and I, our leadership teams were based in Southern California. And between all of us together, we bring decades of experience in senior housing development, operations, hospitality, and healthcare. As Oakmont's development arm, O and I were responsible for acquiring, entitling, permitting, and delivering new senior communities throughout California. We work together with the jurisdictions from due diligence through construction oversight, permit coordination, and our focus is truly creating projects that are both operationally efficient and designed to complement their surroundings and the communities we come to. So just something I like to mention here too. So together us and Oakmont, we are a long-term holder of our properties. So we do own, operate, and develop these. We like to tell communities that too because it's a very important thing, you know? We're not here just standing here as a developer. You can call us when the community's open and our team's still managing that on the day to day. So together, we bring a proven partnership and development track record with our operational excellence throughout our design of our assisted living and memory care communities. I do want to just go through a little bit of our approach, not just in terms of operations, but about our residents that live here. So our guiding principle is to create environments that bring life, engagement, connection, and not isolation to residents. Every community we develop is built around a simple idea. Residents should be able to live comfortably, safely, in a setting that actually feels like an extension of their home. Oakmont, as I mentioned, manages the day-to-day operations with this same philosophy. We offer personalized care, hospitality, and enriching programs for our residents that allow them to thrive. Our communities do have a lot of extensive programming. We have culinary programs, wellness classes, art, music, therapy, sensory tactile things. And our memory care service, services are compassionate and we individualize them to the residents that are living there. We prioritize connection with our neighbors that we serve, the communities that we're in. We like to do a lot of intergenerational programming and work with local schools. Right now, we're putting together a partnership with the Girl Scouts of America. We work with nearby colleges to really bring kind of that intergenerational aspect into our community programmings with the, with the outside. And I did, Martha did mention something that there's an intergenerational project that hopefully is going to be near our community. And one thing I'll add to here, just kind of before I do, Commissioner Danny, for this type of community, so you're asking a little bit about the units and, and, you know, kind of together with parking, but all of these units are licensed by the state of California. So yes, we're calling these residential units, but they are residents that are coming in with some level of care needed. So this kind of goes and we can answer any questions later about kind of parking and things like that. But in order to, to come to one of our communities, you need something, whether it's help with medication management, something kind of a lower level of care, which goes up to, you know, bathing, showering, dressing, everything like that. So it's not a independent resident per se. So which is kind of with the parking, why a lot of our residents don't drive? Because they do need help with daily life activities. So happy to go into more about that too. And so the next slide, Martha, thank you. And I mean, Martha, you did a great job going through all of this, but I'll just kind of touch on a few things. You know, we started planning this and we've been involved with the town, the staff and coordinating with them. But there's a lot of history on this site with a previously entitled project that we know. And we're very mindful about that when we started planning this site plan. We wanted to maintain the access and connectivity to the pond while working still with the town and collaborating to protect it. Our site plan is designed to avoid disturbance to the pond entirely. We will develop with the Arborist Report that was done. There is a lot of unhealthy trees, vegetation out there, but we will develop and we're still coordinating this because this is very early on. But we would like to do kind of a tree phasing planting plan to where habitat species could still, you know, the roosting herons can still be there. Maybe we work something through that, but that will be worked on together with staff during our formal application. And then that way we can kind of transition plantings of trees over time for that reason. This layout was also refined with close coordination to town staff to reduce the overall scale. It's slightly our, our highest peak. The majority of our building is at thirty seven feet. The two-story components at about twenty seven. A couple of the peaks and gables go up to the forty-three four that was mentioned. And I do believe the, the other project was a little taller than that, but we took that into mind when we were doing this. And then again, going through, through landscaping, preserving where possible any healthy trees, protecting these existing pond and wetlands. And the site design also promotes just walkability, visibility, gathering, and connectivity to our residents that will be residing there. And then, and you could go the next slide too. It's just, I just kind of put this here. But, and then the architecture uses, it's just kind of soft tones, layered landscaping to kind of blend into the modern livability of Corte Madera. We have a lot of courtyards and terraces just so our residents, you know, feel, again, this is important. This is an extension of their home. You come here because you do need assistance with daily lives. It's not that you want to move in here. And so we really like to integrate all of that seamlessly with the surrounding environment. So they feel comfortable. And so truly, I mean, with that, we're here to answer any questions. You know, we, we want to keep the Corte Madera's charm here on this site. We want to improve this site and we really, you know, appreciate the town, the staff, or everything we've done this far. But we are happy to be here and excited to get your feedback so we can start preparing a formal application. Thank you.
Thank you. Does that constitute everybody on your team that wants to speak? Or does the architect want to make a presentation of any kind?
That is it. Thank you.
Okay. All right. So now that you're front and center, you're going to get grilled by these commissioners up there. So. Yeah, I'm going to go in the same order that I went before. I'm going to start with Andy and see if you have any questions for the applicant at this time.
Thanks, Peter. I actually have a non-design, non-architecture question, which is that for, for the other senior housing sites that you have, is there typically an affordability component? Or how does that work? Is it a case-by-case basis? I guess this gets back to the question of whether some kind of inclusionary zoning might apply here, which is an open question on the legal side.
Sure, I'm going to invite my colleague Colin.
Okay, thank you.
Colin Bagwell, VP of Acquisitions for O and I Development. So I realize we've, we added some ambiguity to the process by first submitting under a, with affordable, utilizing the California State Density Bonus, so fifty percent density bonus. So backing up a little bit, the, your local, it is our position that your local inclusionary ordinance, which enumerates the type of housing, which are defined terms in your zoning code, does not enumerate our use, which is the defined term. So we believe that we are exempt from your local inclusionary ordinance. Irrespective of that, there's Health and Safety Code law, California state law, that exempts all RCFEs from any form of rent control. So to answer your question, no, we have no rent control on any of our projects that we're currently developing. We have eleven in development across the state. So we submitted a plan that was utilizing the California State Density Bonus above and beyond. Senior housing is entitled to a twenty percent density bonus gratis without providing affordable housing. We were doing a larger project to utilize the density bonus under that larger project. We would have been required to provide affordable housing. When we resubmitted the application on a smaller project, we were no longer required to provide it because we weren't utilizing the density bonus above the twenty percent density. So that's, that's what, that was the change in the plan that led to this. But to answer your question, in its, you know, in the, in the first place, we, we don't have any affordable across our, across our portfolio, no.
Got it. It's all market rate. Good. Thank you.
All right. Andrew, is that your question for the moment?
Yeah, I'm also curious. The corner, the corner building, which was described as vacant, commercial, is there, is there any plans for what's happening there? Is it intended to be developed or occupied or?
It's been vacant for, for quite some time. I think Ameritrade was maybe the last tenant. It's an office building. There is limited parking at that site. So I think that makes it challenging to find a tenant. But there, we've not received any building permits or inquiries related to that site.
Got it. Thank you. That's all I have for now, Peter.
Okay, thank you. I'm going to go over to Valerie then.
All right, thank you. I have a few questions. So I'll start with just generic ones. So in multiple paragraphs, you mentioning the European-style design. Would you like to elaborate what that means to you?
Sure. You know, it's, it's kind of those soft textures and actually different, you know, tile on the wall, the, the roof line to the flatter, the flatter roof there. And then a lot of the outdoor terrace space, really kind of creating that indoor-outdoor feel is what we really like for the residents.
So it's mostly aesthetical aspect?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. All right. And then other question I have, what measurable sustainability metrics would be included in the project?
Sorry, say that again?
What measurable sustainability metrics would be included in the project?
Oh, sure. So all of our projects just in California are obviously LEED certified and basically LEED silver by the time they're built because Title twenty-four and CalGreen Tier One, just code requirements in California alone already puts, put you at those tiers. So silver requires some EV-ready spaces, some solar-ready things. So as we get further in the plans, I know these feel really developed, but there's a lot more that have to go into these plans right now. So we go through that during the design process, but.
So, and obviously LEED silver does meet kind of like a Tier One CalGreen requirements. But the, would you consider on the project to go above the typical benchmarks that CalGreen sets on projects?
Yeah, that depends. We usually discuss that during our, our first formal submittal internally too with our team. And so that would be probably part of our updated project description when we're ready to submit to. So we can include that in there too, if we decide, you know, what levels to go.
Raise the bar.
Yeah, sure.
Thank you. All right. And then you also mentioned some volunteering programs and intergenerational gathering and program that you would consider. So could you just clarify whether the residents, like whether all of the, I guess, garden spaces and outdoor spaces would be exclusive to residents only? Or they would be open to the community?
So when I speak of kind of intergenerational programming too, that would be something organized through our programming that would come into the community. So whether it's a gardening, I'll just use examples, but like a gardening activity or an art activity or something, it would be organized through our operations team to be in like a designated area. It wouldn't just be like the community's open or the courtyard's wide open.
So there is a reason why you wouldn't, yes, enclose the commercial component of the memory facility and open the, all the rest of the dwelling units that are not the memory care to the community so that they feel a little bit more part of the Corte Madera?
Well, and when you say, if you collaborate a little bit, like when you say open.
Remove the fence and open up access to the pond, to the community. So people can use the park and community spaces within inside of the facility.
So again, we are licensed by the state of California. So there's a lot of regulations we're under. And so having people freely coming to and from, licensing, there's certain requirements we have to follow. The pond I know was talked about, and again, this is kind of feedback, you know, we want to listen to. But having the connectivity and kind of the trail, you know, that's going on by one oh one to the adjacent parcel, it's like that trail isn't necessarily fenced in, for example. So if people were walking back there, they still can. But amenity space is really particular through the state of California.
Understood. All right, thank you.
Sure.
And, and in terms of design, I guess it's a related question to the previous one. How would the building's design and operations ensure that it's part of the community of Corte Madera? But I guess like you answered like partially about it, but I probably will have comments later and recommendations on how to improve that. Also, my other question is obviously on the housing for staff, are you planning to have any housing for staff that, who could stay while they're providing services?
No, we don't. We don't provide housing within the project.
So we, obviously we have an issue of having affordable housing and it's doubtful that the, your staff members would be able to afford anything in Corte Madera. It's that's biggest issue that we have right now in the town. How would that be addressed?
I mean, depending on where associate, like our team members came from. We don't provide housing because again, they're, they're fully licensed units for assisted living residents. So during kind of onboarding and, and hiring, it'd be depending on where the people are coming from.
All right. And then I just have a design question. So it's just, to me, it's unfortunate to see so much parking up front right next to the main street. And again, it feels very exclusive in terms of the design. That particular Tamil Vista side of the street feels very secluded and sometimes it's not feeling safe to walk even, even though like, you know, town is very safe. But it does feel dark and underlit in that particular area. And I was wondering if there is a way to change slightly the design or would you consider to look at the different studies where parking is part of the building, part of the units, and then put, give a little bit more space to the outdoors and shift things around so that, you know, it is again, more integrated with the community?
Sure. I think this site and our civil engineer can talk a little bit about this too, but there's a lot of constraints. So going back to the floodplain in FEMA, I mean, we have to raise the site almost a foot to raise it out of the floodplain. And so that does put a little constraint on kind of parking and how the building layout is. And based on the previous entitled hotel project and us working with town staff too, keeping that footprint where we're raising it to lends itself really well to the site. But lighting wise and landscaping wise, I mean, we're actually really known for this too. We plant mature landscaping. We do not want this, this site to feel, you know, like it's not inviting or lit. You know, we will have bright lights, but you know, really nice, you know, downlight, like dark sky lighting and extensive landscaping too. So I think the improvements that we're looking through, you know, to do on Tamil Vista and the street right there will, will be really, really nice.
My biggest concern is having a parking next to the bigger street. That's kind of where, because you, you're devoting a lot of space for the parking specifically. And if you're raising the building, I wonder. if you could put parking on the first story, right? Like that, this way you can eliminate. But yeah, we can, we can discuss that on the recommendations too. I have.
Sure.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Valerie. Over to you, Margaret, your questions for the applicant.
Do you have any concerns about that on-off ramp right there from 101 right into what would be your driveway?
The driveway. Sure, sure. I, I completely understand where that's coming from and drove it today again. That is why we're, I mean, the main reason we're using that secondary access point. And then as Martha kind of mentioned, as we get further into this application, after this, this preliminary application, we can look at some additional things there. Because I, yeah, that's, that first driveway would be very challenging. So yeah, it's a short, a short distance.
When you're fully staffed, how many employees do you anticipate having?
Seventy-eight or eighty. Okay. So seventy-eight or eighty.
Eighty. And how many do you anticipate will have to park on site?
They, yeah, they'll all park on site. A lot of our residents don't drive because.
That's almost all the parking spots.
Yeah, we have ninety-six.
There would be employee parking spots. I can't hear.
That's actually, sorry. Yes, we have three shifts throughout the day. So when we say seventy-eight to eighty, that's full-time employees, but split over three different shifts. Yeah. So our, our biggest shift is during the day, that, that six to two, and then we go two to 10 and 10 to six.
And will you have visitor, designated visitor parking for traveling therapists and?
Yes, and future, yep. We usually do designated visitor spots and then also like future resident spots that are closer to the front.
My concern is that, that Tamal Vista street behind there is very impacted already with a lot of traffic. I don't know if you've noticed it or not. If you come during the time high school is being let out, you'll notice it. Another question I have is about the extra height that you're adding on. And I assume it's in the middle part of the building right here. Is that?
There's, there's a couple gables and architectural elements like that, but yes, that's, that's the point that reaches the forty-three.
I guess I'm assuming that's because of the amenity area.
Yeah, that's the third story. Correct.
And, and so I, I guess I'm just wondering, is this extra height decorative or is it functional?
No, I mean, it, well, it's functional because we do, again, if you were to walk into like a room or something that's a lot less, you know, tall as this, I mean, you don't want like a seven foot or an eight foot ceiling. So typically we do about 10-foot floor plates. And then gables and some of the roof lines are a little, you know, that create undulations and interests in the building. They're a little taller.
And so I guess my question still is what, what goes on in the height above the regular roof line?
Just, I mean, that's just the seal, you know, just the seal.
It's just going to be open space?
Yeah.
Could you describe for me that the typical kind of person or family unit that would rent the two-bedroom units?
I'll give you a little bit of that, but we could follow up with more information if you need any of it. But yeah, typically it could be both a couple or a single person who wants more space. So I think we get a variety, which is why we have several different unit mixes to, to pick from. Cause some people are coming in and if they're downsizing, you know, from their home, they might want the extra bedroom to create an office or their adult child wants to help them move additional things in, or it could be a, a couple.
And so typically if a two-bedroom unit is rented because they, somebody is downsizing, are those, are those the people that you had described before that need care?
Yes. There, there's an assessment you have to take before you move in to determine your level of care through the state of California.
I, I guess I want to make sure that I understood that the reason you eliminated the affordable units was financial. Am I correct?
Yeah, it's.
Yeah, because they are, because.
Can you step up to the microphone, please?
So the reason that the state of California precludes this type of product from having rent-controlled units is because of the rent control. There's the, the rent is a, is a portion of the total cost of occupancy. Then there's, as Carissa alluded to before, there's care, levels of care depending on how much care you need. The average age, age of our resident, by the, by the way, is eighty-five years old. So they, they have various levels of care. The rent control only applies to the rent, not the care. So I think it's a complicated, it's a much more complicated business than a multifamily project where there's a rent component and that's it. There's a rent, a care, ancillary costs of occupancy. And there have been situations in the past where a person can afford the rent, but not the care and get into a rent-controlled situation. It could be detrimental to that. So it's, there, it's more nuanced than just the rent component of it. And that's, so when we looked at a, a larger building, we initially had utilized the California State Density Bonus of the 20%, 50% requiring affordable housing that went back and reanalyzed our performance and decided that it doesn't make sense. We should downsize the building as opposed to providing.
Does the need for affordable housing figure in anywhere there?
Well, I think building more housing creates affordable house in other locations within your community. But there's a specific, as I mentioned, there's specific reasons that our projects are excluded from affordable housing.
Okay. I don't think. I think that covered the questions. That I have.
You'll have more opportunity later on. So, you know, write those down. So, all right, over to you, Dan.
Thank you. I, I do want to say I it's clear you put a lot of effort to this point in your design and planning and we appreciate that. This is, these questions are not in priority order, but I didn't see anything about site lighting in the plans. Can you talk to that?
Oh, sure. We'll have a full photometric and lighting plan. This is not even full schematic design yet for the pre-app. So typically for a pre-application too, we actually usually do a site plan. And so the town required elevations and a roof plan, which is why it feels pretty, pretty extensive, but there's a lot missing out of here that will be included in the formal app.
Yeah, just, you know, in the past, we've been very concerned about dark sky or meeting the.
We do all of that. Absolutely. Yep.
The tree survey, particularly relative to permit trees. It seemed to me, and I, I overlaid the tree survey over your site plan. And they're about the same scale. And there are some number of permit trees that I think could easily be saved with just very minor, I mean, some of them are actually already in tree islands in your site plan. And what I can do is I can give my markup to the staff and they could share that with you. I mean, particularly taking out five mature coastal redwoods that moving part of the building five feet would save, I think that's a no-brainer in my perspective. Also, I understand that the permit trees that are where the building footprint is shown need to go if you kind of develop the site. But some of the trees that are listed as poor condition or fair condition from my untrained eye, there's a few small branches that are dead. These trees have not been taken care of. They haven't been trimmed. They haven't been fertilized. So I would hope maybe your arborists could go back in the ones that again, are not where your building footprint needs to be. Maybe there are some that with care could have another good, long life.
Sure.
Bicycle parking seems small to me and you can maybe respond to that based on in the past, but you list five short-term. I'm not sure what short-term means and two long-term. You know, this is Corta Madera. Everybody has a bike, even people in assisted living. So, and there's plenty of land, I think, where you could put more outdoor bike stores. So.
We'll take a look at that definitely.
Thank you. The sidewalk along Tam, Tam Vista undulates. It has curves in it and I'm not so sure why. And it doesn't seem to be consistent with any other sidewalks on Tam Vista, which are all straight. So maybe you could respond to why they're moving around.
Okay. We'll, we'll take a look at that, but it shouldn't be moving around.
Yeah. Bell, Tam Vista, I think is a good, my opinion is a good example of the kind of streetscape that fits well into a corridor that's getting more density. I'd like you to consider a sidewalk on Madera Boulevard. And partly because it could connect to the path that goes by the pond. And right now there's, you'd have to walk through the parking lot to get there. I mean, unless you're a building resident. There's a sign at the entry. I assume in the next round, we'll see what the sign looks like, size and so forth.
Yep, absolutely.
The driveway entrance off of Tam Vista is not shown on the engineering plan. C twenty, C two point zero. Maybe you could clarify that. And also that same drive off of Tam Vista extends east to the adjoining property where you're showing that connecting. So maybe you could comment on whether you have some sort of legal agreement with that owner to exit through their property?
We'll, we'll have to look at that. But Wayne, is, do you have a plan for the other ways?
That's what I thought. Yeah. So yeah, it's, it was the easement that was granted for the previous entitled hotel. So we are going to be working with, with the owners, obviously, and keep that in place is the goal during our formal application.
So in the next round, we would see some agreement?
Yes, yes. Or correspondence and, and that where it's in, it's in motion.
You show fencing around the entire project. Can you talk to whether that's absolutely necessary? What kind of fence it is, what it looks like, how tall it is?
I don't think we've got, we've gotten that far yet, based on this, this phase of the design. However, again, every time I've been out here, I do think fencing definitely along Highway 101 is necessary. There's so much trash and things back there right now that we'd want to clean and kind of help preserve and keep in good condition. The rest of the site, the fences should be more courtyard, memory care, internal as well. So we'll work on our fancy plan and that would be part of the formal application too.
Well, again, my personal opinion that is being part of the community and engaging with the community. Fenced off project doesn't, doesn't do that from my perspective. You mentioned transportation services. You can comment what they are. Also, following up on some of others, planning commission comments about about the traffic on Madera. I'm concerned that the residents, mobile residents will try to get to the shopping center, but won't go to the corner where the crosswalk is. Could, is there some way that you can, in your management plan, address that? Because it'd be very dangerous to cross mid-block there.
Sure, possibly. And I'm, I'm I'm anxious to kind of start working through that too with, with staff as well, as we get a little further down and see the previous traffic studies.
Thank you.
And plans, of course.
Thanks, Peter.
Okay. So I'll take a couple of questions for you. But I want to pick up on what Dan was just talking about in the sidewalk that I brought up early on, that there was a, a good sidewalk plan along the Tamal Vista corridor right there. And the whole idea was to create bike space, take the poles out and a walking space, shrubbery growth and a fence at that property line before. That was a big part of what was agreed to. So I think having that, those elements present in your next presentation might, or you look at those to see what you want to carry forward would be important. Cause that was something that was pretty well set in stone after numerous discussions. As was the Madera traffic study that proposed a couple of traffic islands and some other things out there. They're all in, they were all in development. Nothing on that side was, I think, completely affirmed, but it was definitely talked about. So Chris, I, I want to ask you about this employee housing thing. You guys said you don't have any employee housing period for anybody in your projects. That sounds like a doctrine or a, a process that you stuck to.
Yeah, we, we don't, we don't supply any employee housing across our current portfolio that we're working on right now.
Okay. And is that, is that regulatory or that's just a preference for how you want to structure your projects?
No, I, I do think it's because it's, it's in our CFE, fully licensed from the state of California. If there is a different product type in here, like independent senior living or active adult senior living, that's kind of more of a market rate resident, active resident. I think that would be different, but with the state licensing and bringing the residents in, it's really specialized.
Okay. In the application, I'm sure there will be plenty of public comment about that. So make sure you develop a response to the employee housing, particularly with what we're under for requirement at the moment. Back to Valerie's question about solar and so other green things. You're going to bring the building to be solar-ready but not solar-paneled. Is that correct?
I can't answer that this time. At least solar-ready, but possibly solar-panel. So I'll make sure our, that will all be included in the updated project description.
Okay, great. To, yeah, Dan's comment about the Tam Vista exit at the northwest corner that should be looked at. And I understood talking to staff about the exit to the neighboring property. That's always been a part of what the fire department required and that was pretty well entitled and you'll have that same entitlement, it sounds like, when you go forward. Let's see. So community involvement. I mean, I hear a lot about that and you guys are bringing something to the town that is a pretty significant project. So when you hear those words, community involvement or community something, what do you, what do you guys think of? And what's your response to that? How do you approach that from a facility standpoint or from a program standpoint of how you run it? What gets it involved in the community?
A couple of things to that. I mean, it's partnerships with, depending on the community, you know, what's out there. But what I'd like to do too is get with my regional operations team that's working on these. They've been reaching out to like the Alzheimer's Association, colleges. And again, it depends, we're developing and breaking ground on other projects throughout California. So kind of ones that are going forward right now. But I'd love to get some information over to you guys for the next So kind of ones that are going forward right now, but I'd love to get some information over to you guys for the next hearing. And so we can have kind of a more comprehensive list of what that programming is looking like and how we're developing it.
Yeah, okay. It's important. People are thinking about such a prominent property that it's, it's not siloed and that there's some way that it, it reaches back in or brings people in at the community level. And I can't speak to how you might do that, but that is definitely something that people will be commenting on. What, what does the community get out of this? And what are you guys bringing to the community? You're bringing some economic stability. You're bringing some jobs that'll be mostly outsourced outside of Corte Madera. So you know, what, what happens is with this project to bring it back to Corte Madera. It's a good project for you. It's a great piece of property. It'll probably be very profitable down the road. But you know, as a, they want to know that how it's publicly presented. And I would like staff to have some of the previous plans available to the commissioners to understand what got approved and why it got approved. I think that might help to some extent. So one of the elephants in the room here is the environmental study that nobody's spoken about yet very much. But there's in our packet, there's a lot of the 2016 commentary about the pond. And Bob Silvestri has commented about it in his letter commenting that it's blocked off. It's, it's a problem not to address it at a greater level. So we're probably going to hear about it in public comments shortly, but can you address that before we hear about this from the public?
Sure. And if, I mean, can you elaborate a little bit? Are you just about us, our plans to not disturb it or how we're going to?
It looks completely closed off, right around it and, and that you're, you're not disturbing right at the pond edge. But the typical plans for the pond included previously some buffer zone and so forth away from the pond high watermark and so forth. And so on the south side, you're building right up to the pond, which is pretty much where it is now. But the program for creating a buffer to the pond is something that's going to be brought up. And I'm sure that we'll hear from some other community members about the birds and you know, creating a time for the construction and just creating the habitat. So your tree replacement plan would call out removal of those trees and then planting some in there. So it's going to come around to back to you, I think. So right now your plan says we sort of, we don't disturb the pond itself, but there's nothing about a buffer area or improving an area outside of the pond to help preserve or encourage that is a natural area.
Absolutely. And no, I appreciate that. And I think that's what we're really working with, with staff on and our biologists. Because on that south side that you're talking to about, there's currently an existing wall right there too. That is really close to the top of bank or might be right up against it. So we are in, we're starting preliminary conversations with the Regional Water Quality Control Board. And what that looks like, you know, as we develop this tree planting plan, the phasing plan, there's, there's some coordination that's going to need to go into that. That we're aware of though as well.
Great. As another side question, what do you think your timeline is for moving this along after this hearing and study session? You're going to go back to the drawing board. You're going to add more. Give us an outlay of what you'd like to see happen over the next year with this project.
I mean, so probably speaking kind of high level, we'll go back. You know, update the plans, get the full formal application submitted all together, work through. We've got some things to work through with sequoia determination, inclusionary housing, those elements. We plan to be submitted before the December holiday because we need about six weeks probably to do this. Four to six weeks. And then hopefully we can just move this right along through next year, you know, again, get some feedback. Come to the hearing and work through the entitlements by, by the summer and then go into permitting.
Yeah, okay.
And, and sorry, I'll just add too, because working with, it's why the, the preliminary conversations are so important too with the Regional Water Quality Control Board. And, and Army Corps is because you also need a sequoia determination for that as well to start that permitting process too. So there's a lot of, a lot of things going in.
Yeah, a lot of things going on. Okay. So I'm going to now say, let's open this up for public comment. And I'm sure there's some folks in the room right there that would like to stand up and speak to this project. And I know there's going to be some people online. I see a bunch of people online. So with that said, we'll open the public comment section for this and start with people in the room right there.
Hi there. I'm Suzy Beatty and I am a, a senior in, in this town and have been involved in the community. And although I'm sorry to see our wonderful hotel go away, there are a lot of reasons that we're sorry for that. I think many of us are looking forward to having a facility like yours here in town. You'll notice as time goes on that there are going to be a lot of people in the community commenting on what goes on. I know this is an early stage, but I did, I was informed about it, by the way, Dan, I did know about it ahead of time. So that's good. I had some of the same questions that Margaret had, and that had to do with the, the parking and the numbers and comparing it to how many employees you have. So it sounds like you're going to have at least 30 employees or so at a time during the day and you'll account for that. That ongoing thing. I know usually these, we worry about parking and then it ends up being okay, but it is something that, that really does need to be of course addressed. The other thing was something that Peter brought up, which I was very, this is a, a green community. This building right here, part of the reason that it was able to be redone was because there were so many things in it that were acceptable to the community. I know that there are a lot of things that you don't have to do because of the state mandated things that are going on. I'm aware of that. But I also know that if you, if, if this group and the town communicates certain things to you, you'll be so happy that you helped and fight and you'll be more welcome to, you know, and you want to be welcomed in this community. Cause Corte Madera is a warm and wonderful place to be and to have a business. So we, as, as just a towns person would say that I hope that you will really listen and look forward. We look forward to having you, you know, here and be part of the community. So I do have a couple of questions. One would be, do you consider yourself and this project to be quite a fancy, nice upscale facility? Or is it just sort of a more regular facility? I know it's not anything below, but I think you know what I mean. There are upscale communities or upscale projects. And along with that, it makes me ask, and I know I, I, it may not be appropriate, but approximately, how much is it going to cost? One person to have a one bedroom place in the regular part of the facility? If they only need, needs, let's say a minor amount of help? And I'm curious, I think the public's going to want to know, how do you choose people to go into that, those areas? So maybe that's something that is already, already done. But what was there? Oh, I had a really hard time. I have glasses and I, I've just passed my driver's test. But I can have a really hard time reading these plants on this, but I think I'm seeing cypress and things like that. So please know that Central Marin Fire and the town of Corte Madera and everyone in the community has been working very hard on trying to pay good attention to being fire safe here in, in Marin County. We are going to be abiding by rules that have to do with zone one, two, and all that that go out, which I'm sure you're already familiar with. But that also has to do there, the town's not going to tell you exactly what kind of plants to plant, I'm sure. And most people aren't, but please pay attention to that, to that. I mean, please don't plant cypress trees and things that we know are volatile. There are tons of people around that can give you that information.
Thank you, Suzy.
I probably used more than three minutes, but.
Yes, you did. All right. Thank you. Who's next, please? Okay.
I'm Denise from Corte Madera here and you know, I like the idea of an assisted, you know, living facility. But I'm, I think it's just way too many units, a hundred and fifty units in that, you know, pretty condensed area. I know Margaret was talking a lot about how dense that area is. People are just racing off the freeway. I almost got hit a couple of times today and racing out of the town center. So it's not a safe area, especially with the commute traffic, the high school, getting out of high school. Massively, a lot of congestion, which increases fire risk, of course. I don't really think if sequoia, sequoia should consider congestion as, as an important factor. What else? I think the units are too large, 1,400 square feet, I think you said. That's not necessary for a person who's living in a assisted living facility to have a unit that large. I think if we consolidated the square footage of some of those units, we would have a much smaller building. Three stories is way too high. It kind of mimics Emeryville and Marin is not Emeryville. It's a small town place, but when I looked at that, I was astounded by it was. And I think you should reduce, make it, make it two stories. I think that would be a lot better. Reduce the size and square footage. If, if we can't have any say in that. I'm afraid you're not really considering the effect of the habitat. Want to chop down 113 trees. That's just not acceptable. I'm sorry. There's a lot of animal species that live in those trees. And you don't have a buffer zone again around pond. I mean, I can't support this, even though I do like the idea of assisted living. I just can't support the project. And I hope that you guys, I mean, a lot of what Dan had said and Margaret said kind of reiterated what I'm saying. I also like what Valerie said about the parking lot. If we're going to have to stare at this massive parking lot from Tamil Vista, that's going to be very eyesore. So while I like assisted liv, the idea of assisted living, I really can't support this project. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Steven Sklad and I live at 11 Council Crest Drive, which is near the, the current hotel site. The back of our house has a somewhat clear view of the hotel over our neighbor's house. I reviewed the applicant's initial site plan and notes and I wanted to share a few concerns. Number one, and this has been brought up, the number of parking spaces. I question if there will be enough parking spaces for residents, staff and guests at peak times. Our neighborhood always already serves as overflow parking from town center. And I worry that an underparked site or facility will exacerbate, exacerbate this problem. My main concern though is the height of the building along Tamil Vista Avenue. Having a three story structure across the street from single level homes is a mismatch and will impact our views and the character of the neighborhood. I think most of the massing and height of the building should be set back and away from the homes on Tamil Vista. If there must be a three story section, put it on the eastern side of the site. Thank you for your time and I look forward to learning more from the applicant.
Thank you. Good evening, members, commissioners, chair. My name is Sergio Braz and I'm a field rep for the carpenters union here in Marin County. And I'm here to speak about the upcoming project before you. With my concerns, I've attempted to reach out to the developer multiple times, but have not yet received a response. My concerns come with whether the general contractor, contractor is a responsible contractor, a responsible contractor that honors labor standards. Labor standards are the foundational protections that ensure our workers are treated fairly with dignity and respect. These standards guarantee fair wages, health benefits, apprenticeship opportunities and local hiring practices. More than just legal requirements, these protections are what stand between the community's prosperity and exploitation. They're the difference between building a strong, vibrant economy that benefits everyone and allowing developers to cut corners at the expense of our neighbors, our workers and the integrity of our community. When we allow developers to bypass these labor standards, we see the negative consequences unfold. Out of town contractors often flood into our city, bringing out of town workers who are not only from outside of Corte Madera, but are also paid wages far below a livable standard. These workers often do not have health insurance, retirement benefits, or even opportunities for advancement. Worse still, they have no investment here. They won't be shopping in our stores. They won't be sending their kids to our schools. They won't be contributing to our local economy in meaningful ways. Look, and in, and systematically, local workers would be shut out. However, when we prioritize strong labor standards like prevailing wages, skilled and trained workforce requirements, local hiring goals and health coverage for all, we are not only building housing or commercial space. We're building careers, investing in the future of our community and creating pathways for our neighbors to enter and thrive in the middle class. Labor standards are more than just a line item in a contract. They're a lot, long-term investment in the economic, economic health of our community. They provide a framework that ensures that these workers in Corte Madera are not only treated fairly, but also are treated with respect, with an opportunity to grow professionally and contribute to the local economy. That's why I strongly urge the planning commission to ensure that all development projects in Corte Madera include strong labor standards like implementing our prequal language and essentially leveling out the playing field. This is not just about the quality of a building. It's about the quality of life for the people who build it and for the residents who live and work here for years to come. At the end of the day, the true value of a project comes with the people who construct it. Our community deserves nothing less than high quality, well-built projects that are in, that are the product of hard work, fair pay and a commitment to the future. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Sergio. Thank you. Who's next in the room that would like to speak up? Okay, nobody approaching the, the podium right now. So we've got a number of people online. Do we have hands up online?
Yeah. Yep. I'm going to allow Cheryl to unmute yourself.
I'm Cheryl Anjanati. I live on Tamil Vista Boulevard directly across from the property. And I want to emphasize the traffic and safety problems that Madera Boulevard presents. I think the property will be essentially isolated because the, that stretch of Madera Boulevard, it's like trying to cross the Mississippi River swimming if you're on foot. And it's really important, you know, the, the folks that are going to be in assisted living, they're still living. And it's important that they have a ability to do as much as they can and have the choices to do that. I was, I was with, visiting a friend and she was talking about her mother-in-law and how happy her mother-in-law was in this particular facility because she could get out and walk around the block to the bank and, and do things independently. And so maintaining some level of independence is important. I'm, I'm sure you're aware of that, but Madera Boulevard is a problem. And I think in coordination with the town, it really needs to be addressed in some fashion. Narrowing it, people come off the freeway and they still think they're on the freeway. If we even just narrowed the road, that would be some help. And I want to also just encourage the path along one oh one back to the pond. It's really in bad shape and no one could, could, if you're in a wheelchair or something, you'd just probably bounce right out of it. you're in a wheelchair or something, you'd just probably bounce right out of it going through there. So I hope there would be plans to correct that and improve that. And also, the mention was made about a sidewalk along Madera. I think that's also very important. I welcome the project. Not welcoming to have a lot of construction across from my home, but I do welcome the project, but I hope it can be integrated into the community in good fashion. Thank you.
Thank you, Cheryl.
Thank you, Cheryl.
All right, and then Bob, I'm gonna allow you to unmute yourself next.
Okay, this is all very informative. I would like to go back to the issue of not so much affordable housing, but employee housing, and realizing that this would not be part of your development plan. But is this something that the state can give you a density bonus on, or the town of Corder Madera could give you a bonus on to provide some specific workforce housing for your employees only? And this would be set up where it would have an entrance to the outside, so that, you know, it, it would not be a part of the interior of the assisted living center. But these would be small apartments that would be set up on the outside for a limited number of employees, as long as they were in your employ. I would like to see that explored, and if there isn't a way that Corder Madera or the state could make it feasible for you. The other issue that had been brought up, talked about Tamil Vista and the Collier Building on the corner. Have you approached Collier about purchasing that property? That could make a much more integrated project for you, as well as helping with the Tamil Vista project that we're looking to try to do. The, the other comment from my time on the planning commission was my remembrance, and I think Peter's remembrance, of how contentious the issue of the pond was, whether it could be improved, could be aerated, could be some amenities with it. But as you know, if you try to do anything with it, you have to go through an extensive permitting process that precludes trying to do anything. So I think you're smart to leave it alone. I think, I can't imagine a project that would have less impact on a pond than a senior living center. And I also can't imagine anything that could impact it, other than maybe a requirement that i- if the residents have dogs or maybe even cats, that dogs and cats aren't allowed in the area of the pond because of the verge that would be in that area. And from looking at the, the pond and the condition of some of the trees, I think having some healthy trees that'll mature, provide shade and habitat going forward makes a lot of sense. I agree with Daniel that, you know, if some of the existing trees can be trimmed and prepared, that would also go a long way in not having sort of a naked-looking spot for a period of time. I think it's going to be a good project. Good luck with it.
Thank you, Bob. Who do you have next?
I don't see any other hands raised online.
It can't be. I'm just kidding. So that's a low turnout tonight for this, but this is just a study session. Okay. So I'm going to say we take a little break here, and then we'll come back and we'll talk some more about this project. So we'll say nine, ten, we come back after a short break. All right. Well, welcome back. So in the, during the break, did you see any other raised hands come up for comment?
Nope, no other raised hands.
Okay. So Carissa and team, you probably took notes of the speakers and comments before. Would you guys like to get up and make some specific responses before we ask you some more specific questions?
I don't think I have specific comments, but I do want to say thank you to the public, though, because this open study session is really helpful. A lot of these concerns we knew would come up anyway, so it's great to hear everybody's feedback as we prepare to come back with a formal submittal.
Okay.
Yeah.
Great. So while you're standing there, you know, Bob Bundy asked a question about the employee housing, and you answered, I think definitively for your company, and it's just not a part of the program. And he asked again, could the town provide a bonus, or could you consider in your plan, after hearing comments about it, that you might do something to include employee housing?
Yeah, I would, I would like to kind of rephrase that, too. It's not that it's, you know, not a priority. So, but we definitely chatted a little bit, and it's something we will look at when we get back together internally.
Okay, great. And he also asked, had you guys made any contact with the corner building there on the lot, the Collier Building there?
So our broker has. And I think right now, yeah, that's not something we really dove in too much due to, I think, kind of cost and what
Sure.
Sting that building for.
Yeah, right. Okay. And I mean, there were some certain comments that I know are going to be answered in the application. And you have people who will say things such as it's too many units, the units too large. I think that fourteen hundred square foot applies to just the largest units. But what is the average square foot of those smaller units that you have in there?
Our, our units, the studios are right around four hundred square feet. One bedrooms are around, there's usually a couple floor plans, and I don't have the unit mix right in front of me, but seven, eight fifty. And those fourteen hundred square feet ones that were just mentioned, there's very few usually of those.
Yeah.
And typically, those are usually the first ones to lease up to, because surprisingly, people do want space when they are moving out. But we did take those notes down, too, and we'll look at it. But yeah, the, the units are market. And there's a lot of other communities in the, the area, too. So.
Yeah, I just want to clarify something about the parking and so forth. The hotel, I believe, has parking along Tamil Vista now. Correct, yeah. There's a fence there, and you don't see the parking along Tamil Vista. But the plan for Tamil Vista actually opens up that sidewalk more. And the original plan for the hotel was to set this, the fence back from the sidewalk and have a greater sense of openness and a bike path there and so forth. So I don't know if you've seen that original plan for the corridor there.
Yeah, we've seen that plan. I know we're setback. I don't remember exactly what it is with the, with the street improvements, landscape buffer. And then we will have a, I mean, like, do we know how tall that is going to be there for the parking? Kind of like a, is it a fence, not a, I don't want to say fence, but don't we have a little, obviously, so the cars don't drive over into Tamil Vista? Like, just the curb, like, kind of curb cut there. Yeah, there's no fencing plan. So we are setback, but when we go back and work through the plans, too, we can always provide some cross-sections, which are also helpful, too, to see, I think.
Yeah.
From street levels, so everybody can see what that looks like.
Has anybody suggested that you use the Aegis facility as sort of a, a idea of providing some guidance as far as traffic and parking goes what's over there? Because that's on the other side of town, and that is a facility, senior housing facility, and they have, it's similar to what you're providing here, but slightly different classification. So has anybody thought about seeing what's there and how that, doing a informal study of that to present?
So we're familiar with that community. We have not discussed anything in particular about it. Is it, is it to the parking specifically?
Yeah, certainly the parking, the number of cars, and how much traffic goes in and out of there.
Oh, understand. Okay. Yeah, sure. We can look at that. Also, with the number of communities we do have, too, we're happy, and we've talked to a little bit, to staff about this. We provide parking surveys all the time. Most of, yeah, depending on the community, we can get some comparable communities, but happy to do parking studies as well, that they basically count on the hour, every hour, who's coming in, who's coming out.
Yeah, right. And that's, that's the impact that the community feels on the road, is how many people exit, you know, come and go from a facility. Yeah. And, okay, so that's going to be important. And I think that your facility is probably a low-frequency facility, but we don't know that. We need the information. So, okay. In terms of comments, I, I don't know, is it, I think that was really it that I felt like needed to be put back in front of you. I'm going to ask the other commissioners if they want to have some follow-up questions for you right now. So, starting over at the dais again, you guys, I'll start with Valerie. Do you have any further questions for the team?
Yes, just one clarifying question. In terms of the removal of some of the trees, I know some of the commissioners have touched upon that, that there's possibility, like, to reevaluate which trees you might remove, which not preserving, obviously, larger trees with larger canopies. So bringing back the idea of they're probably already habitate in the canopies of the trees that currently exist there, obviously, it's sensitive. What mitigation would be taking during the construction to preserve that? Because obviously, that will be a big disturbance to the native habitat of the pond.
So obviously, I'd have to defer to our arborist, and we'll go back and kind of work through this over the next several weeks. But in past projects, I mean, there's several, depending on the tree, depending on the size, there's several things you can do to mitigate as far as fencing, drip line. So it really depend on if there's a tree that we're saving, and then you got to look at the size of the canopy at that time. But what
What about the area during the construction itself? Would you be enclosing the area so that the habitat of native species are not disturbed during the construction process?
Like the, the site and then the pond, like the pond area separately? We could definitely look into that.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you. I have no questions.
Okay, all right. Over to you, Margaret. Do you have any more questions you'd like to ask this applicant?
Will there be onsite management?
During what part, the construction?
Day-to-day.
Excuse me?
What, what type of management are you referring to, like during construction?
Is there going to be somebody in charge, living on that site?
Oh, during operations when we're open?
Yes.
Yes. Well, no, well, living? No, but we have, we are staff twenty-four seven, again, licensed through the state, so we have three shifts throughout the day. So there's always associates there, employee team members there on premises. It's like they don't, nobody, we don't shut down at, you know, like, six PM at night and come back at eight or anything, or they're twenty-four seven.
Okay. So nobody from your organization actually lives on the site? It's all employees on shifts?
Yeah, well, and, well, they're, they're all from, yeah, they're all from our organization. But yes, there are different shifts and different managers or, or executive directors.
Okay. And I just wondered if, I, I had a concern about the union representative that, that spoke and why he felt, spoke today. It's unusual for us. So why, why do you think he felt the necessity to speak to us today?
I have the same question. I have not had a union representative at a, I've never done a study session, actually, so this is great, but even at a hearing. So I cannot answer that.
Okay.
But we exchanged cards out front, too, and he took both of our cards. So we'll set up a call with him. Yeah. Yeah.
Okay, that's the only questions I have.
Okay. Margaret, I will say that to have a, a union rep contacting a developer at this phase of the project is a little early for that to occur. They're a long ways from selecting a contractor or knowing, you know, what's going to get built, when it's going to get built. So it's premature for that person to say that they need something from the developer. But on the other hand, he's made himself known, and now these guys are aware of that concern. So it's two-sided. He was a little early on one hand. On the other hand, now they know he's out there and that the unions are interested in being involved. Okay, Andrew.
Few, few questions. There's not medical care as part of your facility, is that correct?
Like doctors or?
In other words, my parent, my, my mother now lives in a facility that has every level of care. You have to come in as an independent occupant and then right on up to medical care. It seems like you have to have the need for assisted care, but it doesn't go up to the highest level, which would be medical care. Is that correct?
So more like a skilled, like a skilled nursing, or what would be the highest level?
Skilled nursing.
Skilled nursing, I guess. I mean, the memory care, obviously, there's a medical component to that, I'm assuming.
Is there skilled nursing?
Well, we bring in care, but yeah, didn't understand.
Yeah, I, I don't know that we, we can answer the question without more information, but we'll have different levels of care up to, but not including skilled nursing.
Okay.
So it depends on what skilled nursing specifically is required for, if it's, you know, post-acute or something like that. We will have, we will bring in, like, palliative care and end-of-life care services.
Okay, okay. Hospice, yeah, yeah. I was curious about that. And then, out of curiosity, because this has come up before, what is, what is the projected rent for a one-bedroom unit?
Oh, they know.
For three and a half years.
Yeah. It's the market rate, of course.
Like, we'll, we'll go to Aegis, get their rent, see what they're collecting right now, see what their community fees are, and then we, we comp and set them off of those.
Got it.
Yeah.
Got it. And on the heels of that comment from Dan earlier, I have a strong concern about people that are going to be walking across Madera Boulevard from here to get to the town center. And I'm wondering, it seems to me that there needs to be a crosswalk with the flashing lights, and I don't know if that's something that the town addresses or whether that's something that the developer would. How does that work, actually?
It could be either, depending on the circumstance and the, and the trigger for the requirement. So we'll definitely be looking at that with the, with the next version of the project.
Okay. All right. And then also, this came up before, but I highly encourage you to be proactive about the sustainability issues and solar panels in particular. I think it's a, you're going to have a fair amount of roof area. There's good southern exposure. I think the community would really appreciate that.
I appreciate that feedback, and we've got that definitely in our notes.
And then finally, I want to say that, you know, overall, I appreciate your design work. It's nice that it's, I think it's nice that it's three stories and not six stories, I think, is what Tamil Vista was. And I just appreciate
Thank you.
It's a much, much better starting point, and I appreciate that you're here to
Thank you.
Take, take our input. So thank you.
All right. Thank you, Andrew. Dan, you're two.
Okay. Yeah, I guess if you could respond, I think Valerie mentioned it, maybe Margaret, about the frontage on Madera and the parking in the front. And I don't know, given where we're at, whether that's something you think you can take a closer look at or not.
I'm not sure at this point. Did you mention Madera or Tamil Vista, the parking?
Madera.
Was it? I thought it was Tamil Vista.
It's been brought up by both, on both elements there. Madera Boulevard now has a giant parking lot there for the hotel, and Tamil Vista has parking for the hotel alongside of it as well. So So, um, when you guys are asking about the parking on those two fronts, um, I'm not sure it's much different than what it is. But you can express that and ask what it is you'd like to say about it.
Okay. And the, the second thing that you might consider looking at, and I don't know whether the other commissioners would agree with me or not, but, um, the, uh, you know, I think on Tam Vista, already the building is 80 feet from the property line at least. Uh, and then Tam Vista probably has a 60 or 70 foot right away. So I don't know. And particularly where the, where the, um, memory care facility is only two stories that there's a concern, at least on my part, about the height there. But, um, one thing that might be possible would be to only have one row of parking, one travel lane, move the building approximately 20 feet west. And what that would accomplish is it would accomplish a 20 foot buffer up against the pond, uh, on the west side of the pond. And there's 11 parking spaces that are there in that row, right up against the face of the building. Could be moved, uh, to the northwest, um, where, yeah, I think you can get 10 or 11 spaces there. And I think that would go a long way, in my opinion, in providing the kind of buffer people would like to see, uh, against the pond. That the other thing that wouldn't bother me, although I know the neighbors may not agree or planning commissioners not, if you wanted to create more flexibility in the site planning, because the site's very tight, um, does it make any sense to make the memory care three stories? And I know probably there's some real efficiency in the plan you have, so I don't know if that's possible.
Yeah, three story memory care just doesn't work with, with licensing and non-ambulatory residents, um, unfortunately. And again, with, with the site design too, it's, there's a lot of constraints on here. Again, raising it out of the floodplain, sloping, all of the ADA paths of travel. So if, you know, when we talk about shifting the building to that 20 feet, I mean, we've got certain slopes we have to, um, for, for traveling. I mean, for the drive aisles as well as, as walkways and paths for ADA, um, that that won't meet either. So, um, that one's, that one's pretty tricky, but we can look at the parking screening. And again, we're still studying the pond. This is, you know, this is early, um, working through the buffer, having our preliminary conversations with the water board, um, and the Army Corps too, to see what we can do back there.
Well, I will just add that there is criteria under the conditional use permit. And, you know, we'll make recommendations at town council for that part of the project as appropriate.
Yeah, sure.
Memory care is only on the first floor on that, on the west side of the property. The second floor is assisted living.
Okay.
I think the goal there, right? Because this, the southern portion is three stories and the western is two.
Yeah, along Tampa, there's partial three stories along the western side. Um, most of it is two story with one level of memory care and that's memory care and assisted.
Right. And the goal was to step down the building along, well, this is as much as we could to, uh, against the residential on the other side there. But the memory care is all on the first floor. Um, and that's because of, you, you have to keep it together and it's, it's a security unit. It's, it's separate from the rest of the.
So that I think complicates the question that we'll have to look into legally because, um, while we have limited discretion on the, on the, um, SB part of the project, uh, we have more discretion on that. But if the building is stacked, I'm not quite sure how that's going to work. I didn't realize it was stacked.
Yeah, I was like, and do you want?
Okay. So we, we, I don't know that we agree with staff on their interpretation of the bifurcation of memory care and assisted living at the state law level. So there's a differentiation between the city zoning ordinance and the way you guys deal with specific uses and the way the state deals with those uses. And the California State Density Bonus Law expressly identifies residential care facility as an allowable, you know, it's a, it's a use that the density bonus can apply to. So we, the, in, in its entirety, not bifurcated between the two. And the Housing Accountability Act SB 330, um, well, I, we would say that we are, even though it's, it's partially commercial with the memory care is a residential project overall. In fact, more than two thirds of the project is residential, which makes the project in its entirety a housing project for the purposes of SB 330. So our opinion is that both the California State Density Bonus Law and SB 330 apply to the entire project, inclusive of the CUP requirement.
I guess we'll see what staff says.
Yeah, anyway, so I didn't want to get into it.
Okay. So anybody else have any further questions or any?
Just have a follow up question.
Yeah.
Did you guys consider, um, different entries to the site? Like only from the Madera Boulevard or have you considered Tamil Vista as well?
Well, the, the entry right now, if we get the second entry and keep that easement in place, that's how we will have access to Tamil Vista. But we utilized obviously the two entries, um, that are existing and then from the previous entitled project. Because the building on the corner, it's kind of tricky. There's really not many entries into the project. So, um, we utilize that same one.
But you haven't considered the study when, um, you would kind of reorganize a little bit of that parking spots on, on Tamil Vista side and kind of make a main entry on facing Tamil Vista, make it a little bit more residential. You haven't done it. Okay.
But often, but there's quite a bit of a great difference. And one, if you lift out the blood point, you need to add to it. And, um, the whole building footprint, pad, finished floor. Needs to be at the same elevation. There's a pretty big grade differential between, um, Madera Boulevard and our front entrance as shown today. Uh, but Tamil Vista is even worse. And there's really, we can, we'll look at it. We'll definitely look at it. We understand. This is, this is what we came up with, given some of the constraints that we have, having to meet that external grade.
And the cross sections that we'll prepare to, I think will be helpful to see that from street level on Tamil Vista and the, the grade going up.
Yeah, I just wonder, and this is the question and perhaps slash the comment as well. It's, um, it does feel very institutional, uh, in general. It doesn't feel residential. And I, as I understand, there is a part of, um, you know, an aspect of a project where it should feel a little bit more institutional, uh, specifically to those, um, 32 units that are memory care. But I do feel like if there was any, um, challenging thought to perhaps separate, you know, break out the buildings, create more like a townhouse situation, right? Like for the, like create, like you could still dance, create the density with, but not creating these institutional feel, creating courtyards for the parking that are not in a row, or like kind of like breaking it up a little bit and challenge the architecture of the site a little bit. Um, what is it now? Because I, I feel like what is now is not working and, you know, community is not happy specifically of how the parking is affecting, um, that area of the street. As well as, um, I feel like, you know, the front entrance also is not working right now there because the traffic is tremendous and the cars are flying off from that highway. So I, I, you know, just besides going from what has been done before in terms of the hotel, which again, like planning commission put a lot of work into working through, but hotel is different, right? Hotel is not people necessarily always walking, um, back and forth, whereas residents will. Um, so I just wonder like if there was, um, beyond, um, a thought of just a typical approach to this project where you could challenge the architecture and standards and place it in a more welcoming to the community ways. Make it look more involved.
I know I keep mentioning this, but it's, it's hard with a licensed community through the state with an RCFE. There's a lot of things that go into the building internally for visibility of our residents and certain locations and walking distances to dining or amenity space. So bifurcating and, and creating separate buildings is really to me kind of more of an independent senior living use because we need the courtyards. That's where they gather, right? And again, if there's, there are walkers or wheelchairs, like I, I hear what you're saying with the town, you know, a townhome concept and kind of creating that. But it's assisted living and memory care is much more operationally intensive than a more independent, um, community out there too. And I mean, even with the parking, we heard this tonight too. I mean, the hotel had, I think like 188 spaces planned. I mean, that was like a parking lot. Um, so with our, our landscaping, what we're putting in more, more mature trees, creating kind of, you know, that buffer and/or the, the layered landscaping, I think it will soften it up a lot. Um, further renderings can be done and things like that later in stages of the plans as well. I think that will help, um, with what we're planning.
Yeah, I think, I, I mean, again, I, I voiced, um, the concern about it, but to me, the biggest challenge is that portion of Tamil Vista, which is very unsafe right now, um, with the big fence and a small parking spot in front of the hotel building. And, um, it's, I mean, we understand that the movie theater site is abandoned, right? Like obviously. But there is just even that tall fenced area with the parking. They do have vegetation there, you know? It, it's not changing the story, right? Even if you put trees there and, and grass, like it's not gonna make it, um, you know, less unsafe in a way. But so I, I'm, I'm just challenging that particular corner in general and also the pedestrian traffic. Um, and I wonder if you guys have done multiple studies because these again in front of us, even though it's a study session, they look very developed to us. And, um, it would be nice for this study session to see options rather than, you know, here's the almost hundred percent schematic design and this is what we're gonna go with, right? So that, I, I feel like again, we do have a limited discretion, but it would be nice to see that, you know, you guys done some thoughts and studies in terms of, um, how to make it more user friendly, uh, in terms of the people who are constantly walking back and forth in that area.
Sure. Thank you. I, I appreciate that.
Okay. Is that everything from you guys up there? Um, I think it is for the moment. Um, I'm going to chime in here on a few things. So that, um, you guys have talked about the entry on Madera. And when we looked at the hotel, there's a lot of study about how to handle the traffic flow in and out there. I'm going to suggest that if you put an entrance on Tamil Vista, that would be more of a traffic problem because that's one lane in each direction on Tamil Vista. And Madera actually has about two lanes, uh, in each direction. And people can slow down to turn into the hotel or pull, or into this facility or pull out of it. I think that, um, having an entrance on Tamil Vista as a primary entrance would be a bigger traffic problem. Um, just driving down there, I go down there a lot to the other office buildings. And when somebody turns in there, it's a, it's a traffic backer upper and so it feels unsafe. That's my feeling about it, that having it as far west on Madera as it got it is, um, appropriate. And that there's more opportunity for people to turn into traffic on Madera than there is on Tamil Vista. Uh, that's my feeling about it. Um, Dan come, or, uh, Andrew commented on the architecture. And I think that this architecture is better than we've seen on many other projects. It's more articulated, has more, uh, architectural elements to it. It has the, the sloped roof. It has the, uh, shades over the windows. It has articulated faces. It has belly bands. I think it's a step in the right direction. I wouldn't know what to suggest other than it's the right direction. Um, any more of that would be helpful to have it feel more residential. Um, I think you've gone a long ways toward that, but, uh, continuing that to enhance it and, uh, have it not look like just a big block. But, um, I think that, um, there have been recent projects in the area that have done just that and added architectural elements to a basic block and they look great. So it can be done. Uh, it's a cost factor. I realize that. I think, uh, the, uh, idea of having a walkway on Madera to go, uh, all the way around to the pond pathway is something that was discussed in the, uh, other project design and, um, makes it more pedestrian friendly along that street. So if somebody wants to cross, they can get to the corner, um, by walking on the sidewalk in front of the hotel. Then, um, the previous study for Madera Boulevard had two or three options. And that was something that was town-directed and studied, but the hotel took a part in, uh, helping to create the design out there on Madera Boulevard for traffic management, traffic slowing, uh, creating ways of, uh, getting across Madera Boulevard. So please take a look at that and see what you can bring to the table. The financial responsibility fell upon the town, but the hotel was going to contribute to that project, um, to some degree. Um, I can't recall what that was exactly. So, um, I think the, uh, the pond is just something that is going to come up in hearing. If you take all those trees out, um, I, there's going to be a lot of commentary about losing that habitat. Um, and, um, that's going to be problematic when people really get a hold of a actual application. And I, I, but on the other hand, I support the idea of putting new vegetation in so that it'll be good for another 75 years, 100 years. I think right now it's looking rather sad. I see it a lot when I'm over there, probably weekly. So it needs help. Um, and I think it could be restored with new vegetation. So I'm in support of that new vegetation over there. Um, and if you did, if you had any biologist or anybody talk about what happens with new vegetation and all of that, that would be, I'm certainly, certainly helpful to your cause. There was a rough plan for creating a aeration system for the pond, um, some way of, uh, making sure that it, um, it sustains itself. Um, it's a difficult management problem on that pond water, um, because it just empties and really empties to where you can't aerate it regularly. Um, so that's a study that you'll have to look at very carefully on, if you haven't already. So I want to ask you guys, is there anything you'd like to hear further from us up here?
No, I mean, I call unless you think otherwise, but I think this was really helpful to finally meet and hear some of these, um, items firsthand. Some of them, like I said earlier, we were expecting anyway. So it's great to get the feedback and, um, help prepare our application when we come back. That was pretty clear.
Okay. Well, that's good. Um, Amy, uh, is there anything else that you feel we need to touch on before we close out the study session?
No, I think from a staff perspective, we are.
Sorry, I, I have a question. We have, we had questions, but Peter, are we doing our comments or?
No, we can do comments. I thought you were made, you had made your comments in the form of questions.
Oh, no, I thought you're doing the questions. Then we're gonna have the, um, room for comments.
Okay. Well, go right ahead and have at it then.
Sorry. Um, yes, I do have a couple of the comments. I, um, I do want to say that, um, I think the design wise, it's, um, very beautiful in terms of the palette and the facade design. Um, so I, I do agree with Peter. That's, it's probably one of the, um, best projects that we have seen so far in front of us in terms of the larger, uh, housing elements that we, uh, have experienced here. But, um, and I also would like to applaud you guys for pursuing LEED Silver Certification to have some sort of accountability and measuring metrics, um, in terms of, um, your projects in general and your portfolio of the projects. Um, but I do have a list of, uh, limited discretion. Um, but I do have a list of uh limited discretion comments that we, I would like for you guys to consider. Um, I, I understand that, you know, you, you kind of looked at everything and you um you considering many aspects, but um when you know, our biggest concern, and it's not just your project, but in general, all of the housing element projects that coming to us is that besides Cal Green, we don't have authority to uh really put a stamp on the environmental design here. Um, just because they are usually um excluded uh from CEQA and um that's unfortunate in a way, and we don't have a way to control it. So um I feel like going beyond the benchmarks of Cal Green and even lead silver is, would be extremely important for Corta Madera in general. I feel like we live in the days when we have to uh putting kind of the budget aside, put the foot down and say, design resilience is the key um for all of the buildings, for all of the applications that are coming in front of us. And set an example. And I feel like uh there's no better example. It's a, you know, kind of living a assisted facility that is coming in because that's almost like philosophically is the core notion of, you know, design resilience in a way, like we are designing for people that do need to have the need and how we approach the design. You know, I, I got excited when I was reading the application about the European design and we kind of figure it out. We settled that it's more a statistical approach for you guys, but I feel like when we're talking about the European design, European design is a philosophy. It's not just aesthetical minimalist materiality, but it's also about the um how it impacts environmentally, how uh how the measures have been taken in order to make sure that we are engaging the community as much as we can. And um and I would love to see more of that. I'm craving to see more of that because I feel like we don't have enough buildings, like a lot of the buildings do looks institutional. Um, you know, very much suburban. Um, we are moving away with the density units that are proposing on each side. We are moving away from that suburban feel, but we are still a small town in Marin that is uniquely connected to other towns by bike pass, by walking. You literally can walk to three towns within the forty five minutes of, you know, our area. So um to me, it's like having that um uh having the buildings that are more engaged with the community, that looking a little bit more residential is the key to kind of preserve that. Um, and with that, I have a lot of comments in terms of, and not comments, but I guess recommendations of uh how we could engage that a little bit more. Um, so probably number one, because it's related to the pond specifically, is a bird safe design. Uh, just to consider that, you know, put their low reflectance glazing, um visible fruit patterns, which you're already doing that, but you know, kind of do a little bit more of it down the line when you are when you do get to those hundred percent schematics, consider the uh low blue exterior lighting so that it's protecting the foraging birds. For instance, um and many other measures that you can also um engage to. The water management and retention is one of the key elements. Uh, you know, permable paving, you, you are proposing parking, so permable paving would be a nice add on to uh help the water retention. Um, as well as bioswales, we are in wetlands. Um, I I'm kind of, you know, don't understand why we do not have the enough. I know San Francisco is doing majority of that for their communities. Um, this is a perfect site for that. Um, so it would be nice to see if you um can incorporate some of those bioswales that are maybe connected, maybe not to the pond. It would be extremely helpful to filtrate the water. Um, you know, kind of the passive design for um or passive measure first, I would say uh for um the exterior shading elements um on the east and west facades. Then obviously you probably will consider the higher barrier roofs, but um kind of create the landscapes with shaded canopies uh for the residents to be able to walk through the loops without um, you know, being exposed to the heat as much. Um, and perhaps still I understand that you have licensing issues by in uh in opening up some of the areas to the community, but perhaps within the design, you would be able to incorporate some of the courtyards or maybe one where it will be a shared garden space where uh by the community involvement, it's not just the programs that bringing in some of the volunteers or high school students, but also perhaps, you know, there are visiting hours um that can be displayed um for when uh residents of Corta Madera can visit there. Maybe there is a library, maybe there's something, something that can incorporate community a little bit more and get engaged with that intergenerational experience in general. Um, you know, little kids can come into that garden and can have experience with the um senior living um there. Then uh, you know, transparency also to the public and to the town of Corta Madera. So all of the kind of matrix that you would be gathering environmentally for your building could be shared and could be very helpful to town of Corta Madera of how you use the water, how you use utilities, like all of, all of those. I know it's a policy thing, but uh perhaps like building operation side of things would be helpful because we do have many projects that are coming um that um would be uh, it would be useful for them to see the studies and would be useful for them to implement that as well. And uh, and I spoke a little bit about like, yes, like let's lead silver is great because it is a measurement, but perhaps um there is also fit well for senior housing. Um, that is a very easy uh one to get in, but it also involves a lot of the uh policy uh implementations that required to be in a building itself, which are amazing. I think it's great for the residents of the building itself that um uh that could use the benefit of that as well. And all of these scorecards could be published and shared with the town and see the effect of that, almost be like a study model. Um, and then uh general public resilience pla- pla- plan, maybe there is a, you know, like what operations are you doing during the event of a smoke and heat uh that is happening? Perhaps there is some kind of open to public refugee protocol that people can, you know, in terms of the emergency, you know, some public can use portion of your facility um to take a shelter there. I think the biggest thing that we're losing in a current hotel uh right now is public right now can book conferencing space and space there and to use a gathering space in the lobby and other things. We don't have much space in Corta Madera uh where residents can book a space um and provide to do their personal events. And it's a challenge as well to many families. So I feel like having portion of a building, I again, I understand the licensing things, but maybe again, maybe there is a small portion of the building that is open to the community. Um, that could be starting to engage these senior residents with the public as well as providing that little bit of um flexibility in terms of the community space.
Valerie, I'm going to interrupt you for a second. Um, we have to take a vote to go beyond ten P M. So um I, we will get further uh feedback from the other commissioners, but um let's take a voice vote to get past ten thirty or go to ten thirty or sooner uh what might be the end of the meeting. So uh I can't see everybody on my uh monitor here, but I'm just gonna say if you all, there we go. Say, raise your hand and say aye or nay. Please do so now. Raise your hand if you want to go past ten.
Aye.
Okay.
My name is.
It's okay. So we've, we've got uh enough votes to go past ten. So that's what we're gonna do. We're gonna get through all this feedback and um then get to the end of the meeting. So okay, sorry Valerie, please continue.
No worries. I'm done.
Oh, gosh.
I think that I'm down for my list, but um yeah, just, just many things that are engaging the community. That's my biggest concern that it's not and like a lot of um environmental things that I would like to see that go beyond just Cal Green. I, we, we always see buildings that just meeting the basics and um we do crave like some of that little bit more that would fit our uh climate action plan a little bit in a greater detail.
Okay. Well, thank you. All right. Um, to your left is uh Dan. So Dan, how would you express your thoughts?
Well, I, I think they were expressed in the questions I had, so I think I'm done.
Okay. All right. How about you, Andrew?
I'm good as well. Thank you.
Okay. And Margaret?
I have a couple, but.
Please, go ahead.
Um, I just want to reiterate what my uh big concerns are and one is the traffic coming off the highway and, and that corridor and the safety issues of residents getting across the street because I, I'm sure they'll want to go to Safeway at least to get groceries and that has to be really um really, really thought out. Well, um, I would say, I think I disagree with Valerie about the parking. My cousin who lives in the senior area on the east coast was hit by a um because the parking is all over and people drive around her community and she exercises by walking, which is recommended for older people. And she was hit by an elderly driver who sometimes shouldn't be driving, but my opinion is that cars should be parked in one place and easy in and out. And the residents who want to exercise or enjoy the community, spaces should be separated from any kind of driving or parking. I object to the height of the building and that extra space, but I don't think it's um I do commend the fact that it's not a six story building. Um, I have concerns and I wish you would reconsider the idea of putting some affordable units in there. I think that it would go um, go the distance to make the whole project just better. Um, I think the idea of putting a pond buffer is a great idea. I was also involved years and years ago on, on the commission uh with the pond, which became a four letter word um in the community because it, it caused so much upheaval and different opinions. So it's a very sensitive subject in Corta Madera. It just is.
Sure.
And anything that can be done to make it more beautiful, more planting, a buffer zone. Any kind of cleaning up would be really go a long way to make people happy, I think. Um, even birdhouses.
Yep.
Um, and the other thing is about community involvement. I won't go into my ideas about that, but if anybody wants to talk to me about ideas that I have, I'm here. And I just want to point out, and you may not be aware, that just down the block is they're developing a um intergenerational center and um, and it's a walkable distance from this area and it, it, it's just a very easy step to integrate into the Corta Madera community. As I said, any walking distances, that's what's being um besides swimming. Uh, exercise of walking and walking spaces and so sidewalks all around would be great. Also, that's it.
Done.
Okay. Thank you, Margaret. Um, all right, Carissa, uh you've gotten, I think, a good handful of comments from everybody. And uh I don't know, as I said before, uh if there's anything you want to ask us about, what we've said to you, please do. Otherwise, you're off to the races.
I think I have enough at this point. Just kidding.
Okay.
If I could ask a clarifying question though, Margaret, when you're just talking about the pond buffer, but also replanting, improving. So you are interested though in cleaning up.
Oh, yeah.
Okay, okay. That's, that's good.
That's, I, I mean, I think that, as I said, anything that makes that area better will be better for everyone.
Thank you. Okay. That is it?
Yeah, um, I think there's um a good community effort um going on at the Pond and Town Park by a refugio organization that's run by one of the Swisher sisters. And um they are on a long term uh plan to help uh uplift that park pond. Um, you guys might take a walk over there, look at their website, Refugio of Marin is a local nonprofit that's working hard on trying to make a difference at Town Park. And they have that tidal basin there that they're working with, trying to improve it. So they're doing a lot of work around it and um it's, it's changed its uh appearance dramatically in the last year. They have more to go.
Great. Thank you.
And um beyond that, I think you've heard enough uh from us. So thank you for showing up and being of good, sound mind with all the reinforcements that you have in presenting a, a, a project that is able to be considered. Thank you.
Thank you, guys. We appreciate all of your time tonight.
Okay. All right, you guys can exit stage left. And um since we extended, um I would say we could uh at least get the meeting minutes off the, off the dime. Um, we had two sets of meeting minutes um to uh approve. Um, does anybody have any comments on the September nine meeting minutes? Anyone? Okay, so we can um take a voice vote to approve September nine. Everybody say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, okay, they're approved. September twenty third, does anybody have any comments on that set of meeting notes, minutes? Okay, hearing none. Let's see if we can get a voice vote to say we all approve. Ready? Aye.
Aye.
Hey, that's great. Okay, so they don't show up in next month's packet. That's great. Um, it helps close out the year. Um, Amy, is there anything that you feel you want to tell us?
Nothing of substance that can't wait, but our next meeting is a Wednesday, so I just want to make sure people are aware, uh November nineteenth is the next meeting on a Wednesday. Um, and I can email you soon to let you know if we have an agenda item for that, for that date. We'll know soon.
Is that because election day?
Um, no, it's because there's um one meeting that would fall on Veterans Day, another one that would fall on Thanksgiving week. So this is the in between.
You're gonna email that?
Yes.
Okay, great. Um. So I'm just gonna say let's adjourn this meeting here at uh ten oh five P M.